Call please.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Schwer.
Here.
Councilmember Nordby.
Here.
Councilmember Wong is absent. Mayor Moggi.
Here. Motion adopted agenda, please.
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Consent agenda. City business action items and recommendations.
All right, I'll take it from here. First item up is a resolution canvassing the municipal election results on November 5th, 2024 general elections. So we're looking for a resolution. Background facts, Minnesota state statute 205.185 requires cities to certify and declare their election results between three and 10 days following the election. City council acts as the canvassing board. There are two city council seats on the 2025 ballot. Candidates for municipal office were, for city council was David McKenzie, Cesar Reynoso, and Troy Woods. North St. Paul had 7,749 registered voters as of 7:00 AM and 588 persons registering on Election Day, November 5th, 2024. According to the state secretary, or according to the Secretary of State website, the candidates received the following totals. David McKenzie, 2,439 votes. Cesar Reynoso, 2,021 votes. Troy Woods, 2,512 votes, and write-ins of 95 votes. So we are looking for a recommended action of the city council to approve the resolution certifying and declaring the local election results for November 5th, 2024 general municipal elections.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Schwer.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
All right, next up is a review and discussion of the 2025 to 2034 capital improvement plan. I'll turn that over to Finance Director Dan Winick.
Mayor, councilmembers, if you give me a second to see if I can get this thing up and running.
It's from Lisa.
Did you say it's from Lisa? Want to see it?
Which is funny because I just brought that up.
Mayor, councilmembers, tonight we'll go over and take a look at the 2025 to 2034 capital improvement plan. This is the second to last component that's a part of the 2025 budget. Next week, we will hear about the last component, and that's the fee schedule that needs to be approved on an annual basis. So with the capital improvement plan, I kind of copied a couple of the summaries in this presentation part to it, and let's just show you a kind of the category summary for a 10-year look. You'll see that we have the buildings and facility improvements, and these are the numbers, and I'll give you a little bit more explanation on that. But these are the numbers that are coming from the WOLD facility assessment that have been incorporated into the capital improvement plan. And then there's been parks and playgrounds passed and open space has had some updates based upon the Park and Rec Commission. Obviously, you can see the street and utility reconstruction plan, and earlier this year we saw a change in that. Here's of the different funding source summaries right now. This is where they would be funded from. I'll go in a little bit more of an explanation to kind of share with you that not all of this can be funded unless we make some changes moving forward. So we'll kind of get into that in a little bit more depth. But you can see over a 10-year look, there's $103 million worth of improvements that are needed across a wide variety of categories and funding sources. In this report, it does incorporate the WOLD facility assessment. It incorporates updated Parks and Recreation Committee projects. It incorporates WSB's increase in the payment rehabilitation program. The impact of this 2025 to 2034 CIP levy, or impact on the levy would be that for buildings and facility improvements, we have two pots of money that we could utilize to help offset costs that are related to the buildings and facilities. We could utilize the asset preservation funds that currently has a balance of a little over $1.7 million. We could utilize ARPA funds, which is, has a balance of almost $1.5 million. Even with that, it would require us to change our current levy. Right now, we have a levy dedicated to facilities of .45%. We would have to increase that to 2.1%. That is not in the budget that has been shown to date. These WOLD numbers have come in after everything that you've seen in what we certified for the maximum levy. For playgrounds and parks, due to some of the changes that they've had in their plans, we would have to increase the current levy from .55% to .6%. That again is not included in the budget. And then the street improvements, what you've seen for the costs, that had been presented to you earlier in the year, and the recommendation was that we would increase the levy from 2.0% to 3.5%. That is included in the 2025 proposed budget. Kind of want to give you kind of a quick update of where we're at as far as the budget is concerned since the last time that we've met. We had some options that were available to city council. First of all, I want to give a thank you to city council. If you remember when we were setting the maximum levy, there were some options to reduce the levy. We were at 9.88% total. That's all components that includes the city HRA and the EDA. And city council deferred making any reductions at that point in time in large respect to the fact that we were in union negotiations with our five unions. The five unions have pretty much tentatively agreed, I think three of them have been approved by city council, two will be coming forth to city council to be approved. They've been agreed to on the union side. So I'll kind of take you through those items. We had one that there was an update of the downtown design manual. There was a recommendation at that point in time when we did the maximum levy to, instead of funding that report of $60,000 from the general fund that we would fund it from the EDA, the EDA has agreed to do that, so the budget has been changed accordingly so we can reduce that $60,000 from the levy components of our budget. We've also had some good news as far as having increases in our fire aid revenue that we received this year in 2024, so we've increased the estimated revenue for that of $12,800. We do have to transfer some of that savings over to the fire relief by definition, by state statute definition, to transfer it over to the Fire Relief Association. That's $7,200. So that changed, kind of a, nets about $5,600 for us. We also received an increase in our police aid revenue of a little over $33,000. And then we have come across a program through the PERA that we can get reimbursement through the disability reimbursement program for some of our officers that, for their health insurance that the city is currently paying for, and we estimate that at about $44,500. So that's a revenue that we were now starting to recognize within that. I want to give a lot of credit to Jenny for bird dogging that and filing all the paperwork for us to get that reimbursement. And then what was not in our budgets, based upon my review of the union contracts and updating our salary projections, that in the general fund, those union contracts with the cost of living increases and some of the other changes will increase the general fund levy $143,000. All in all, all of those items, ups and downs, we still can get ourselves back to that 9.88%, which is our maximum levy. What that does then is gives us some additional options that we had talked about before that we potentially could do to reduce our levy. And again, all of these are, these options are up to you to make a decision and to hear from you which direction you want to go. If you remember, we could reduce the HRA levy back down to only $11,000 from the $50,000, which would be a $39,000 reduction. If we were to fund those two components based upon the parks in the buildings that are going to be shown in our CIP, that would require us adding back $120,000. And then we would end up having to utilize, taking 100% of the penalty charges from the electric to the general fund, which is approximately $131,000. That could bring us down to a 9.2% levy increase for the year. Again, you don't need to make a, you know, a decision on those tonight. Next week, we will, in our workshop, we will talk about some of these opportunities. As I've always said through the budget process, there's two sides to the equation. There's an expenditure side, and there's a revenue side. And so the expenditure side, we've looked at our budgets. Tonight, you're seeing another big component of our expenditures, and that's our capital improvement plan. Next week, we'll also talk about some opportunities for potentially additional revenue sources for the city to offset. They'll include, but are not limited to, talking about the sales tax and what potentially that could look like. We'll also talk about special assessments and what that potentially could look like at some different various scenarios. We'll also look at the possibility and see how some cities have done under liquor operations. That was something that was brought up, which would require a change in legislation. We also want to find out what is the appetite from city council as far as potentially running a cannabis operation. Those are just some of the ideas that are thrown out there. Again, that's not, there'll be a few more items that we'll bring up, maybe some different charges that we currently aren't doing as far as on our inspection side. Once upon a time in the city, there was a downtown kind of service charge for snowplowing. Maybe it's bringing some of that back. What would be some of the estimated revenue that we could perceive from, or receive from some of those? So those items will be talked about next week on Tuesday. In addition, we'll want to see your direction on where do you want staff to look at? And many of those revenue sources aren't going to come into play in the 2025 budget, but it's something for us to, for staff to start to work at to get, gather more information. Some may be able to be put in place right away in 20, you know, for the 2025 budget, but it's for us to do that long-term plan. One of the things that I've heard loud and clear, and I absolutely agree, is that we're putting more and more of a burden on our residents. And with these dedicated levies to help with our infrastructure, we really do need to look at that revenue side to it and see what other opportunities are there. In addition, you know, it doesn't preclude us from looking at our expenditure sides. You know, we really need to challenge those and see how can we do things maybe a little bit differently than we're doing it today. In your packet, you have the complete capital improvement plan. In addition, you have the complete WOLD report. Kind of want to give you a little kind of high-level snapshot or discussion part to it. We received the WOLD facility report. The initial report that we received was over $25 million was the cost. These are some of the items that I had gone through and also assisted by Mr. Ritchie and Mr. Miller. We kind of went through that WOLD report. There were some duplications, so we've eliminated those. They had an inflation factor. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but we wanted to bring it back to kind of more of where the feds have been targeting with their interest rate expansion, and their target is really a 2%, but you know, that range of 2% to 3%. WOLD was using a 4.5% annual inflationary amount. We reduced it to 3%. They also had in there a factor in there for total project costs. In other words, engineering, architectural contingencies, so forth, built in there at 30%. We have a very respected company that's been working on our streets for a number of years. They never achieve, they never hit a 30%. Normally, it's somewhere in the range of 20% to 25% at tops, and that's including a contingency. So we reduced that from a 30% to a 22.5%. We also changed some of the years. They had put everything at the last year of their priority. So anything that was in 2026 went to 2025, 29 to 28, 32 to 31. We left the 34 alone. Those changes that we made based upon assumptions and duplications and so forth reduced that cost $7.2 million. So what's being shown in the capital improvement plan are our facility needs identified through the WOLD report with those assumptions of a total of a little over $18 million versus the $25 million. So those are some of the changes that you're going to see in that, in that report. Also, as you go through those reports, and like last year, we had all of the department heads here for the CIP, we didn't think that that was as necessary because we were focusing on the 2025 year, and here's the reasons for that. From the police department, the only item that they have requested here for the, to be funded out of the 2025 is body worn cameras, and that has been set up as an annual replacement. And so that's all they have that's identified in the 2025 budget. From the fire department, it's the Freightliner pumper that actually was brought earlier this year and got city council's approval to move forward with that. So what's showing is the remainder that would be owed on that amount. We're going to be very shortly, and you'll see it come up as a, as an accounts payable request to be approved by city council. They're doing that first payment. The chassis is almost done for approximately about $295,000, and then the remainders in this budget. That total number between this year and next year has increased approximately $30,000 from what's been in the CIP in the past. And so due to a couple of change orders and components, and you'll get all that full documentation for approval, just like you did in the past at a later date. The electric fund, when the electric director, Mr. Wick, was here, he kind of explained his CIP. He's got underground wire replacement. He's got an excavator that's really, there's not a lot more into it. So where the bulk of our changes and discussion on the capital improvement plan are going to come on facilities. It's going to come on that street maintenance, and it's going to come on to some of the other utilities outside of the electric. So with me tonight to help answer any questions that we have, we have the very distinguished director, Mr. Ritchie from the Public Works, who oversees many of these components that are in the capital improvement plan in addition to many of our operating budgets. And then in addition, we have Morgan here from WSB to help kind of explain some of that street improvement program and some of the rationale behind that changing for that pavement rehabilitation. And he did speak about that earlier in the year, and that's where we made that shift from a 2% to 3.5%. So with that, I'm going to pause for a moment and kind of hear from city council on what do you want to look at and get down maybe in more specifics with some questions. Obviously, it's a lot to digest with that facility assessment component to it. It's changed drastically, but if you remember, I've always said that we definitely were understated in our facilities, and that's why we had a facility assessment done. It's, if you look, and we can take a quick little peek here at the building improvement component to it. Now, I put them all in bold, and those bold prints that are there, I put it basically by buildings on how it came off the WOLD report. We've got, over the 10 years, the community center building would be, you know, approximately $6.8 million. City Hall building itself, just under $4 million. Public Works building, about $5 million. Again, none of, none of those facilities include anything like renovation type of items. They're really kind of taking care of the exterior, making sure that it's watertight. It's your roofs, it's your, if there's tuck pointing, that's needed. It's your HVAC systems and so forth. That's really kind of what's driving that. So those three facilities, obviously, of $18 million, you know, is picking up almost $16 million of that $18 million. So that's really your driving force on your facilities, your three main facilities that are going to cause, cost a lot of money over time to maintain. And again, when we look at all three of the facilities, they all have one thing in common. They're all going to need in the next 10 years a roof replacement. And those roof replacements are going to be spendy. Those are probably your biggest costs. And then HVAC is another big cost in all three of those facilities over time. Thoughts, questions? A lot to digest.
I'm looking at the prices, or the priorities, excuse me, for City Hall tuck pointing and caulking, as well as Public Works tuck pointing and caulking. And this is, am I reading this properly where it says it's out? Let's do Public Works first. This is page 21. That doesn't need to be done until 2028, correct? But it's priority number one?
Yeah, I think priority, when, and it's kind of really the definitions of those priorities, which I'll kind of go back through our definitions of priorities. It's critical.
Right.
But it's critical in 2028.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, but the fact that we just got all this from WOLD, that's why I'm...
So tuck pointing was not included in the WOLD report?
Interesting.
Yes. And if you remember, when they were here to present at that one point in time.
Yeah.
What was one of the questions that I asked? I didn't see roofs on there. Every one of the facilities is 20 years plus.
Right.
And you don't have a roof on there. And the answer at that point in time was, oh, they're still under warranties. Well, I don't know 20 to 25-year warranties that are on there. But when they went back through there, you know, and to their defense, I think they were underneath the understanding all of them were taken care of through that last hailstorm. And the roofs that were taken care of were really more of the shelter, the smaller shelter...
Yeah, there's all the shingled buildings.
Shingled buildings. There wasn't any of our major facilities, which obviously are big-ticket items. And so they have included those in there now. And again, to me, tuck pointing is something that every 25 years, 50 years, it's a major.
Yes.
Tuck pointing. 25, you usually can get away with, you know, doing just certain areas once you've done a review of the facility. But again, you want to make sure that if there's any cracking whatsoever, even as tiny as it is, that it's taken care of at that time because unfortunately, we get a lot of water in the freeze, it'll crack those wide open. So we've come up with, anything you don't see in bold are really kind of estimates that staff has put together to kind of incorporate things that we saw as we went through that report that we believed should have been.
Okay.
So when you read through this, Ron, are you good with everything that we got here as far as the report pack? Is there things that you look at that you thought, boy, that's a long time to wait for, or what's your thoughts?
Well, what Randy and I did, well, Randy and I and Dan and Brian did is we kind of went through and looked at all WOLD's priorities, and some of them, I mean, yeah, we adjusted kind of things to be, for lack of a better term, more realistic for timing on stuff, you know, like for the roofs on a lot of the buildings. You know, this building and Public Works buildings, the roofs are still in really good shape. But, so yeah, that's why a lot of these are pushed out years, and like we'll reevaluate in, you know, three, four, five years. HVAC stuff, you know, most of the time you, on these flat roofs, you end up replacing the HVAC stuff when you do the roof because they got to be, they usually don't work around them, they usually take them off, put a new roof on, put them back on. So, yeah, for the most part with, I'd say for the first couple of years, we kind of, we honed in on those and kind of tweaked in on those numbers. The stuff that's out further, so when you're looking at tuck pointing in 2028, that's stuff that we're going to reevaluate, you know, when we get closer to that time, you know, the year prior. So we did do some, a lot of tweaking on their guesstimates or estimates on when things needed to be done.
You kind of did the, you know, sign off on the report to say, yep, you know, we're kind of in agreement with this.
Yes, yep, for the most part.
Just want to make sure.
The stuff, like I said, for 2025, 2026, you know, we got to take it year by year because there's so much stuff that, you know, we kind of defined it, okay, all the number one priorities. And then a lot of those number one priorities, I don't want to say we changed them from a one to a two, but we moved them up from, you know, 25 might out to 26 possibly, or 27. So we kind of tweaked all those or massaged those things to where we thought it would be, you know, a better fit, so. So it's just going to be an ongoing eval on things, you know, come up of what we can afford to do. Did I kind of, did I answer your question?
And if we get a bad winter or a bad freeze cycle, things are going to be moving around.
Yeah. Yeah. So, and just because it's such a, you know, it's everything that we own, you know, and there's a number assigned to pretty much everything, you know, it's, yeah, we had, yeah. So, yeah, I'm, for 2025, you know, I'm very comfortable. 2026, you said, I'm more comfortable, but I think there's things as the years go on that will, that we will, you know, evaluate each year for the budget, so.
Thank you.
You know, I think the biggest thing for us is, you know, when stuff starts going bad, or we have something that goes out, boiler that goes out or something, we have, we at least have some money set aside, or that's kind of assigned for our building maintenance. So it's kind of making baby steps here to come up with a plan to be able to pay for this stuff, you know, as it happens. And, you know, we go on a streak where everything is good, then all of a sudden, you know, a couple of things will go out, and it's, you know, $20,000 to replace a boiler or something. So I think getting going here, I keep, excuse me, I keep hitting the mic. Getting going here, just to have a plan in place to get started. And this is just going to be something that's going to be a work in progress as we go on here. So.
Yeah, this is a living document. It's meant to change over time, as we get more and more comfortable with it. The nice component with this from WOLD is that we got an Excel spreadsheet of all of the details, so then we can update and make changes with it as, you know, as time moves on. So that's a very good component that we received back from them. It's not just a report all done. Again, it's a part that it is a living document. It is going to change from year to year. And just like Ron had said, that, you know, there's a potential the roofs aren't in bad shape. This is kind of when they should be. Normally with a roof, what you're going to do is you're going to end up having a, you know, a review of your roof a couple of years before it's actually necessary. You know, you get a roofing company come out there, they'll look at it, they'll say, hey, I can make some small remediations to the roof for $30,000. They'll give you and extend your life five to eight years on your roof. That may be an option to do versus the replacement of it. But what we're looking at here is, these costs are going to come one way or the other, and how does the city get themselves in a position to be able to afford it when it does come? And obviously, you can see that this is the first time all of this information has been put together in the city, so we don't have that plan of how we're going to pay that coming, moving into the future. Again, we do have a couple of pots of money that, you know, come to, you know, somewhere about $3.2 million that could be utilized for this, although city council may make the decision to utilize it for something else, too. Again, and that's kind of that importance of wanting to make sure that you're comfortable with what's being presented in front of you. Again, it's going to change for sure. And then it's really to get in those dialogues of, again, that equation, what expenditures can be, could potentially be reduced, you know, what revenues could be increased, to make sure that we're just not putting all of the burden to the residents through a levy. But as we went through this, then, in addition to meeting with Ron and Randy to make sure that they were comfortable, that we felt that this was as inclusive as it possibly could be, that the timing of things were pretty accurate, that we kind of believed in the validity of what the cost estimates were. Then this whole CIP was presented to our city manager, Frandl, and he went through this with a fine-tooth comb. Part of one of the discussions that we both looked at at this, and credit goes to him, and I know it was brought up in one of our, I think in our last budget meeting, and I'll bring your attention to it, it's on page 23 of the 251, and it's underneath the payment preservations, where we have $500,000 for the McKnight Field parking lot. It was incorporated into the budget. That may be something that we don't want to have in the budget for 2025. Here's the reasoning behind it, is that HGA is in the process of doing a study. So we certainly don't want to move forward with doing something in the parking lot that potentially would change once the report is done, and city council has an opportunity to make that final decision onto it. Now, we definitely could take it out of 2025. Doesn't mean that we can't, if at the end, the report did show that, yeah, you really do need to get that parking lot, that's kind of like step one, let's get that done, doesn't mean that we can't bring that item back at any point in time and have it funded at that point in time. So that's something for consideration. I know that there was comment, you know, on that in the budget, which makes a lot of sense. And again, our city managers are the ones that said, you know, why are we doing things when we still have studies that are out there? So...
Parks and Rec acknowledges that as well.
Yes.
As we're going through that process with HGA, that why is this budgeted, as we are looking at the budget?
Yeah.
It makes zero sense to touch that field if we're exploring other options.
Yeah. So that may be something we, we certainly can have it in there, and just like we did last year, when the CIP gets a final approval, which will be the last meeting in December, that we can put part of, we can have a resolve in there that it's approved, but it needs to be brought back for city council for final approval or approval to move forward with it. So it would be in the budget, but then we authorize. And we did that on a few items last year, for those, if you remember. And so those items to move forward would require another city council action, and we certainly can do that part to it. Part of looking at that, you know, me and maybe overstepping my bounds, but part of that is, and that logical reasoning that is shown with that HGA study and kind of like not moving forward with that, then, and I know it's been a hot topic, so I'm not trying to go, that I'm just trying to look at it from a logical standpoint, is going back to like the community center. In our last budget discussion, one of the components that was brought up was, let's get that facility open so we can start to generate revenue. On the surface, that looks like, that's a fantastic idea, and I agree with, because we're going to have operational costs that we're going to have to cover. However, when we take a deeper dive into that, we look at that, and we have gone out and gotten some estimates, just on some mechanical components for that, and there's a number of heat pumps that would need to be replaced, and they come to approximately $76,000. In addition, there's going to be something necessary for the gym floor, and then we're still waiting on the elevator to find out what the costs are. That would be above and beyond the operational costs. So then the question comes, by the same token as having an HGA study, is that next week, city council will have the opportunity to pass the feasibility study. So question is, do we move forward now, or do we wait for that feasibility study to be done so city council has all of the information to move forward with it? From a pure financial standpoint, the question comes, can you generate revenue to offset that $76,000-plus to make the decision worthwhile at this time, or do we wait for that feasibility study to be completed? And I think at least it was originally somewhere about the end of February, I think, was supposed to be the feasibility study, and that may have gotten moved out a little bit. I haven't seen the final contract piece to it. But, you know, so that's a question. Do we wait to find out? Kind of the same thing on the HGA study. That way, we were fully informed to making those decisions. I can't answer that. It just popped into my head as we're having the discussion, the city manager and myself. So just kind of food for thought, how we move forward with some of those things. Yep.
Then if the building stays dormant like it is now, will those heat things continue to work? Or is it just when you open it up, you need to replace the...
I'm going to defer that. I...
What I was told, talking with the contractor from Humeritec, he said without anybody in there, he said he thinks it'll be fine. He doesn't, they don't know for sure on the real cold days, where that, how that's going to keep up. There's multiple different systems in there, and I can't say I have a perfect understanding of exactly what this heats and what it doesn't. You know, the gym has got two units on the top, I know that heat that. But then there's, you know, there's boilers, and then there's multiple heat pumps that go throughout that building. I want to say there's, don't quote me on this, but I think there's like 18 of these heat pumps throughout that building. There's been, I think, one or two of them replaced. These are a couple that have been out for the last couple, or we found out last year at the end of the season. We didn't do nothing with it because it didn't, we got kind of some pricing on it. We're kind of waiting to see what's happening with the whole thing. So these are the latest, I just got these quotes a couple of weeks ago. So to answer the question, I think they need to be put in there if we're going to open it to the public. They may get by, but I know one of them's a bigger one. I think one of them is around $41,000. So, and again, I can't speak, you know, on what exactly it does. If we were going to move forward with something like this, I'd get a better explanation, find out exactly what it does. But what I was told by the tech that was out, is he was like, you know, we can get by without people in there. He's like, I'm not sure where it'll end up, though, when it gets real cold. So.
Thank you.
One question. Have you or will you evaluate your staff and the city staff to see if there's any, I'll use the word deficiencies, where slight hiring changes might help offset some of these costs? For instance, let's say, I don't know if you and Randy have your boiler's license, but the next hire you make, would it be smart, and would it offset the cost of paying someone a little more if we hired someone with a boiler's license? The next person we hire, would it offset some of these costs? Would it make a little sense if we got someone with drywall experience? Are there staffing changes that make sense in the long run that might help mitigate some of these costs to go from external to internal that are smart?
Yeah, I guess I, I mean, we could, I don't know how to really answer that question, because we haven't really looked, you know, down that avenue.
And I agree. I'm giving you something that I don't expect an instant answer. Just keep it in the back of your mind to see if, to evaluate, to see if stuff makes sense.
Sure.
Do we need an operator's license? Do you have a special? Do you need a special for ours? Are they not big enough for a boiler's license?
I'm sorry, what?
Do we need a boiler's license for the size we have, or no, we not?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know if you need to be licensed to work on these. I don't...
No, this is just to operate them. I used to have a boiler's license back in the day. That's just to be able to operate them, you need to have a special license. But I didn't think we, ours were big enough for that.
I don't know.
I guess part of that, too, would be where our core responsibilities and priorities of what we want to focus on. But I get what you're saying. I mean, we do that sometimes when we're hiring for Public Works, you know, might not be required to be a welder, but people who have that ability, it works really well when they do have that.
Agreed. And I'm seeing a lot of internal costs on here. If we're looking for a part-time gentleman for Ron, does it make sense if we change it to full-time and dedicate half their duties to interior, you know, mudding and taping and the other? So just throwing something out there to keep in the back of our mind when we're hiring for the next people, to see if there's savings and long-term cost benefit to be had.
Yes, we have done that in the past. There used to be some guys that could take care of that stuff, but some of them have moved on, and some of them have moved into different positions that, you know, don't, yeah. It's definitely something we can look
Other questions?
Are you looking for guidance for puts and takes in what's on here, or are you just sharing what's here?
I'm looking for comments, suggestions, thoughts, everything.
I interrupted you, my apologies.
Pardon?
I interrupted you, my apologies.
Oh, no. Go ahead.
You brought up a great one, the half million dollars for the parking lot. I think a link to that is also $80,000 tied into the concession stand over in that area. Should we just wait for...
Anything related in that...
Can we kick both those projects down another year? Until we get, till we get a plan back, I wouldn't put it in the budget.
I actually agree with that.
Okay.
And again, it doesn't end things. I'm just, if that report were to come in, let's just say, March, and city council reviews and says, yes, this is the way we're going, and they vote for it, you still can come back to city council and approve moving it back in and identifying a funding source for it. I just think it's more of a safety net, taking it out, because I like that, I like that logic part to it. Why would we have something out there that we know is more than likely not what it's going to be? Yeah.
Juan. I do see on here that you have it pushed out to 2026. And strictly looking at parks, playgrounds, paths, open space, you pushed that piece out to 2026, and now it's, the passive park is 150 sidewalk along McKnight, 60 gateway, trail access improvements, 45. Update downtown design manual, 60, which is a total of $315,000. There's another, I'm missing something. No, I'm not. So it does look like you pushed, it's pushed out in the CIP for 2026.
The $500,000 is actually funded on a different piece to it. It's on page 23, pavement preservation, so McKnight Field, $500,000 is there. So...
I got you.
Yeah.
We're good.
So that one would be moved to 2026. Council member Cole, what's the other one? So I make sure that I get...
Was there something on there for 80K for the press box and concession stand in the middle of the, in the middle of the ball fields over there? Was there something in there for that?
Yes. Press box concessions, 49, 858.
There it is. And then the press box, both of those combined. Okay, yep, got it. Just wanted to make sure I get the right ones. And to me, I agree with that. Well, I shouldn't say, it's not me who agrees. Do I hear city council? Is that kind of the direction that we'd like to do? Again, those items can be brought back. It just takes another city council action to bring them back in at a later date.
And in that press box is the one over for the Legion ball, right? Isn't that where that, isn't that where that's located, that press box?
That's correct.
Oh, I read it as it's the one that sits above the concession stand.
Yeah, that's how I read it, too.
Yeah.
No?
We've never, well, we've always called the other one the...
Yeah, the press box, I think, is Legion.
Yes, is the Legion.
Yeah, the other one was kind of like a...
Was that the baseball press box, and then there's McKnight press box?
Oh, there you go.
So baseball press box is the Legion one, then? And McKnight is just the tower, like the, like the landing tower for an airport?
Yep, above the concession stand, correct.
Other areas for consideration that I guess I would bring up is, we haven't seen a plan back from anything park-related. And as council member Schwer did the math, it was over $300,000 that we've got set aside for, in 2025, funding. A West End passive park, I guess there was a sidewalk wide along McKnight Boulevard, I'd like to chat about that a little bit. But, I mean, the number-one priority coming out of Park and Rec was McKnight Field, if I remember their presentation correct. So can, I, again, just because we hit the max we look to hit, doesn't mean we need to raise our levy that high to the residents. So again, I'm just looking for things to potentially pull out that can be brought back. But I think I've been very vocal in wanting to see greater direction out of the Park and Rec from a priority list, and where they want to put their funds. And, you know, right now, it's in the study, which is, which is great. We're moving in the right direction. So I appreciate what they're doing there. But does that take precedence over some of, over some of the other things? And I didn't see any money here. We've got a West End passive park fund, but was there funding set up here for McKnight? To redo anything on the McKnight?
I think that's what, I know that's what Parks and Rec is trying to establish right now with the HGA study, is what do we want to focus in on? In our last meeting, they discussed what the outcomes of some of these parks look like. Nobody's, in the, nobody with Parks and Rec right now have determined... So, it's, it's trying to be, they're trying to establish what, where are the priorities and what, what do we want this year? Do we want a downtown park? What does that, what does that look like? So, I don't know if Riley made recommendations or what, what this is, but.
So, again, it would just be, it would be of my opinion that that gets moved out until their study comes back, until they figure out where they want to prioritize their spending, until they've had an opportunity to present to council. And I think then it can be re-entered in, into the CIP. But that's an lame duck, so it's up to you guys.
Well, and the sidewalk along McKnight. What's that about?
Yeah, I, so.
There is a write-up in here, and yes, they were submitted by staff that represents the Park and Rec mission. But, but again, again, your decision, your direction, if you would like those items to be pulled back, again, they certainly can be added any other time, and it makes sense that, that there is a complete presentation on the plan that they're moving forward. And there's, again, a huge component to that is that HGA study that's going on. So, you really don't want to make a decision or go down a path that you end up undoing, I guess, in certain ways.
Well, and I think the purpose right now, I mean, councilmember Cole, we're creating discussion, just like you had asked. We're creating discussion and looking at this further, bringing things to surface.
Yep, I like this.
It's going to be so quiet when I'm gone.
Can't wait.
You're not the only one, I'm sure. Did we have two studies out there, one for the downtown corridor and one for Sepulveda? Or redesign of the downtown plan? Was there two lines on there? You got a lot of lines, Dan.
Tell me about it.
Were there, were there two of them out there? If I remember reading through, I see. Any way we can lump those together and from an RFP standpoint and save a couple of bucks? I mean, it's budget time. I don't know what it would look like. So, it's, keep it where it is, I guess, would be my opinion, but when it comes time to look at it, can, can you bundle those two projects into one?
Certainly, absolutely could, could do that, yeah.
So, when you're talking about the Sepulveda corridor design, I'm not sure what that is. I think that was in community development, or I don't know where that came from. But I was in here looking at this, and there's also in the street maintenance, there's two hundred and ten thousand dollars for Sepulveda Boulevard between Margaret and Helen.
For the parking lot? Yeah, I was, I was working my way down, but that was another one, so thank you.
Yeah, so, again, I can't really speak too much of what is all into that. I think that was community development planning type thing, but I do see it here under street maintenance. So, that probably same kind of deal.
I mean, we keep it in and we don't do it. We levy for it, but, or do you just pass it out another year until that whole, you know, Sepulveda corridor and downtown redevelopment plan has been revisited?
I think that makes more sense, myself.
We're adding quite a bit of traffic to there, too, once the apartment's open, to see what it looks like with Sepulveda as well.
Very good discussion, yeah. There's a lot of moving parts, and so that just makes sense to, you know, wait till we have more information.
So, I'm not trying to be wah-wah. I'm just trying to, you know.
White blanket.
Yeah, white blanket. Thanks, Brian. Downtown Design Manual, I just found it. That was what it was called. And Ron, you have to give me a ride in your one-ton when you get it. Well, yeah, he does have a personal one, too. And I apologize, the detail's probably in there, I just didn't dig deep enough. The almost sixty K for the Northwood Park Building? Are we dropping the ice skating rink and building something different? Or the ice skating hut? Or is that the, are we looking to build something new, or are we looking to do maintenance on something that's there?
Can you?
I am on page twenty-two of my presentation that I've got open.
Mine's under twenty-one. You have two hundred and fifty-one pages.
Yeah, I just literally downloaded it sitting here, and we still have. I looked at, looked both sides, and the page numbers are still different.
That's, yeah.
And I'm on twenty-two.
And then, and what is that?
Park Building twenty-one on mine, too. Fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three.
Just curious what, what that is, and my apologies for not digging deep enough in here to recognize it, but.
Oh, twenty-five thirteen is what you're doing, okay.
There's been no talk or plan of.
Okay, so.
So, confirm Randy, it's half a walds.
So, that's like their worth, maybe, or something?
The building's not worth sixty grand. That's why I was curious if it was, it's going to be a small building to rebuild, and there's nothing there worth sixty grand to redo. So, that was, that one jumped out at me. Does that fall true for the Housie Park Building, then, too? Because that was just done in, right at, or during COVID. Same, is that, those world numbers as well? So, they could, they could potentially slip further out?
Some of it should get touched up.
Okay.
Well, so, according, according to the world report, the Norwood Park Building, those items that are on there for 2025 include provide ventilation air to the main room, and then provide toilet room exhaust.
So, I think what we need to do is, we need to establish priorities for all of these because in here, it indicates they're not applicable. So, we, I mean, as we're looking at this, you know, as we're right now, under 2025, there's nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars worth of stuff just alone for city hall fire and police and building. And I'm just pulling that one out of here, but, you know, again, another fine example is the Northwood Building. I mean, that's a lot of money for what? I mean, so if it's, if we're looking at that, we probably should have these prioritized. I mean, with the Northwood Park Building, that could be a priority of, you know, ten right now because we don't really know what we're going to do with that building and what is Park, what do Park and Rec want to do with that location? Or what did they, what would they like to propose to city council to do? Yeah.
Do we flood that rink up there? Do we? So, do we, do we open it up? So, it's not, so that's not even open? Is there a bathroom in there that we open up?
No.
No?
It's out.
It's just, just a little hut? Okay. Yeah, back in the day.
All right. I think I've probably carved enough damage into, into what's out there that I'll pass.
The one question I have when it comes to that, that Legion Field is, you know, that part of it with the press box. I know they own the lights and things like that. Do we have any kind of agreement that we have with them as far as maintenance on different other things? Because as far as that press box, we're, because the press box, now that we said that's, that's Legion?
That was quite the story, that, that was built and then given to the city, donated, if you will, and it had a lot of issues that had to be updated before we could even take it over. So, I don't think there's any kind of arrangement there. It was just kind of given to the city and.
Okay, they have nothing to do with that. That's our responsibility completely.
Yep.
Okay. I mean, a lot of this stuff is that thirty thousand is a part of safety issues? I mean, they're climbing up, is the staircase half-broke? I mean, that's the type of things where we don't know, you know, what that thirty entails. Is it something that's safety, or is it just?
It's off of the world estimate on what, on what they came up with. I mean, we'd have to, you know, really dig into.
Well, I mean, that, that's something that's been done, though. Is it, have we broken it down to safety, cosmetic, or anything like that with the report as far as what we've gotten?
The world report does have the detail on, and it'll give a description on each one of their components to it.
And so, then we're higher priorities with, I think, some of the stairs and going up there and just probably some of the structural things to it. I don't know the exact detail for it.
Okay, I just want to, for pushing things, I want to make sure it's not safety type of thing. Anything in your board, Jason, you see?
No. Am I correct in the understanding, though, that even though it is in the CIP, it will come to us before it's just done? Correct?
Restate that, please.
Well, e- even though some of these things are in the CIP and we're talking about moving them later, if we left them where they were, that doesn't imply that they're automatically funded and go without our approval. They still come before us and.
But they count towards a levy, don't they?
They're levied for.
Yeah, we levy for it, so it does kind of put it in.
Yes and no.
Okay.
So, if we want to get the parking lot done, Ron's going to.
Yes and no.
Ron's going to do the parking lot for McKnight. We're going to say it's in there. Will it come to council to approve it? Is what, am I following you right?
Exactly.
Oh, that, that's easier. That wasn't my yes or no. I can give a definitive answer to that.
Yeah, so that's what Jason's trying to get at.
It's the levy component to it, yes or no question to it. So, to answer that case of things, it depends on how the resolution's written when you approve your CIP. Last year, the last two years, the way it's been written is that anything that's approved on the CIP is automatically authorized in any contracts, agreements, and so forth that are executed out of it, as long as it's within the cost that's been approved by city council. It's delegated authority to the mayor and the city manager to execute. What we did last year is we had a couple of items that we did not want to go that way, so we spelled them out separately and required them to come back to city council. And part of that shift out there, the reasoning behind it is many organizations do that. Now, that's not a real good one, but it's true. It was really because we had so many supply chain issues that were happening and, and time in which to get things done. So, this expedited that process to it. And so, that's where it was really that focus on that current year to make sure the city council was comfortable with that. And again, like last year, there was a couple of items that city council wasn't comfortable with, so we spelled those out separately. That helps. And then the other question that was asked is, does it have a levy impact, yes or no? The five hundred thousand dollars for McKnight is being funded through street maintenance. Street maintenance levy is at that three point five percent increase onto it, which is already in the, the current proposed budget, unless you wanted to reduce it. So, by doing it, is it going to have any additional increase? The answer would be no. However, if you were to reduce it, or if you kick it out, it still doesn't necessarily have a change in that three point five that's, that's needed because you're going to end up paying for it within the next, you know, few years any which way. It would have an impact if you totally eliminated it and said, we're not ever going to do this. Then we could reduce those costs out of the, you know, looking out, out into the future.
So, so another example would be the hundred and fifty thousand, they were talking for that West End Passive Park. If we don't say, whoa, it's, it's a done deal, signed off, the money's there for it.
Correct, and the authority to move forward with it is, is granted underneath, yeah.
And then it's levied for.
For the Passive Park, I believe there's enough money within the Park Fund that would be able to handle that, so there wouldn't be a necessary of an increase. It's when you look at all ten years' worth of stuff, if you were to do that, you would end up having a, I think it was a point five-five to point six change that would have to be.
Because a lot of my recommendations were based on my thought process that if it's on here, it gets levied for, not that we already had the funds. So, that was why I was, can.
But I still, yeah, but I still agree with, with that principle because there are studies that are happening at this point that do have an impact on those. So, I, to me, I'm going to push them, I'm not removing them from the thing because I don't want them, I'm going to push them out a year. If they need to be brought back forward, again, we get the results or something else, we certainly can do that. That would require separate city council action.
Thank you.
So, no, I appreciate that, I mean, that's what I'm looking for, yeah.
Unless it's pushed out piece to it, yeah.
Now, when we look at the facilities, just because we've never had a complete facility assessment, that's the one that's really in bad shape as of now. Yet, you've already pointed out, and I'm not going to disagree, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done with that, you know. There are lines in the back of world report explaining every single one of, of, you know, that can come up to that total, you know, so with the, is it Northwood? You know, that thirty, that sixty thousand dollars is identified in there. The question needs to come, you know, do we agree with it or do we not? Part of the review that it had with, with Ron and Randy were, do we agree with those items that are in there? And so, I thought we were in kind of consensus that we're in agreement, but maybe we're not. And so, that's always, again, another review that we can do. And so, you know, we can put a pause on, on the whole facility. I certainly, but by this discussion here today, I certainly will now will not recommend us turning, moving forward and increasing our levy on facilities because we may have false information, or we don't agree with that, so.
Well, and we still, we got catch-up to do with our facilities funds, too.
Yes.
So, I mean, so I get that, but, and we're picking on poor Northwood here, but, I mean, we could knock that over for a couple thousand dollars and figure out what Park and Rec wanted to do with it later as opposed to put funding into it. So, for me, I would pull that one completely out of the CIP, but that's, that's just of my opinion.
I'll agree to that. I mean, even, just looking at you, Randy, which you're like, no. I mean, I agree, I'd pull that, too. And I'm, I'm looking at the world priorities, all the explanations, and they're, just how they're laid out. And I think that's something that, for me, and I can't speak for the other council members and mayor, but if we're looking at priorities and we're going to start taking care of our facilities, we definitely need to knock out these number ones, or prioritize our number ones. And what that will look like, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure. I was reviewing one earlier about lights and egress. I have to look at it again. But, I mean, like, under well building number one, there's replace, provide cock around the gas meter pipe. I mean, is some of these, is that something we can do? Okay, so, I mean, that's another piece that, as we are looking at it, as council members, I look at this as, well, do we need this contracted out, or is this an inflated cost? Is this something that city employees can do, public works can do, police? I'm just throwing out names, by the way, so, is it something police can do? Probably not. Just saying.
And I look at it in a different light now that, Dan, you've explained, some of the numbers are in there. So, whether we go forward with it or not, I guess I look at it in a little bit different light than, than the lens that I had when I first took a look at it, and have taken a look at it for the last four years.
Can I, can we provide, or can I provide direct? Can I, can we provide or can I provide direction to looking at what WOLD is telling us on these, on their recommendations for city? And have you guys prioritize what, can we put this off for a year? Can we, I mean, I just hit up the Northwoods building assessment and there's one, you know, here we go, provide toilet room exhaust, not even using the bathroom. I mean, so, but it's. I mean, right here under, oh, that's Housie Park. Provide ventilation air to the main room by adding air exchangers. Is that a priority this year or is that something that we can budget for and keep it in our budget? But sort of, it's not needed this year. I'm just nitpicking now, so.
So, so anything that's in the world report that has a priority number one is then included on your capital improvement.
Yep, I did see that.
2025.
Yep, I did see that, yeah, but is it something that, yes, we need to do this?
So, um, and, and Ron just shook his head, absolutely, we could, we could do that. Well, maybe he didn't really.
Randy did it for us.
Ron, when we talk to you constantly, yep.
Yeah, so, so we will, so we will review all the ones, priority ones in the world and come back and either make adjustments and they get shifted one way or the other and, and we'll give a summary of how that, what that impacted or how, how it ended up being in the final.
Sure.
Yep.
I mean, is that fair?
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, we're just verifying that ones are good.
I mean, some of the stuff I do look at as a priority, you know, I'm in Casey Lake, page 241 of 251, and this is provide exterior emergency egress lighting. I mean, yeah, we want that, it's safety, it's, so that should be in there. But again, I look to you for support on pieces that we should really focus in on as number one priorities. And if world says it's a priority, but city is saying, you know, it's not really a huge priority right now. I trust your guys' judgment if it isn't. So I would like this piece and the facilities piece too, I'd like to relook, to revisit that, so.
So, so eventually, everything has to be looked at, but we'll just focus on the, that, that impacts the 2025 for right now. I don't know if we're gonna have enough time to go through everything, but at least definitely we can do the priority ones 2025 for you. Yep.
And I, just like was said by multiple council members, you know, we're behind, you know, we know we're behind, so we just gotta see where we get our number ones and make sure that we're doing them wisely with the money we got because we don't have a lot to probably take care of every number one.
Yep.
And then obviously, moving forward, oh, go ahead.
And, and I guess I'd like to ask you and John a question, Tim, I would ask you, but.
Yeah, I can be here.
Is there value in, because I was misunderstanding some of how this was financed, I thought we still had to look at it, but because we financed and are giving approval in, let's say, June, is it smart to have a line item meeting, whether it be workshop or city council, where we go through line item by line item? So prior to the budget, they're more secure about what we actually want in the CIP for the following year?
I don't necessarily know if we have to have a meeting in regards to it, but I think city staff can sit down and say, all right, I mean, we're essentially reassessing.
Right.
The priorities. So for priority one right now, for 2025, my recommendation is come back with us, what does that look like? Then you put, say you're gonna check off whatever, I, I, exterior, I don't know what I'm looking at right now for building. But then reassess, okay, we can push this one off or this, this is must do, let's push it off to 2026. But right now, we have in the CIP, there's, I mean, for some years, there's nothing there. So if we can establish, you know, where it's gonna be, where are we gonna move some of these costs, especially on the facilities end? That we have something set aside for the next 10 years, every year there's something.
I think that's great, and then have the, the world assessment plus how we use the buildings. They don't know that.
Right.
That Northland is not even being used. So it's kind of, just kind of takes what we know and puts it together with what they say.
I have one more question.
Sorry, your opinion does matter.
What is the.
For six more weeks.
Finance, secure service window and the community service.
Secure window. Looks like about quarter of a million.
That's a good question, I'm not really sure if those estimates are accurate or not.
No, and I'm still working on, I had, I had a company out probably a month and a half ago to give us estimates on that and I key, I have sent him multiple emails and multiple calls. Their windows for each one of the counters.
So for.
Like the police window?
Yeah, for a number of years, staff has had concerns. If you look at both the community development side and the finance side, they're totally wide open and, and expansive, vast area.
Right.
I mean, it's basically like the city. You know, unfortunately, both sides are dealing with some touchy subjects. You know, from a finance standpoint, you know, you're cutting off my power. And so we do end up getting a number of very irate individuals. Some phone calls are really nasty and sometimes they actually come in. We have something worked out with our, our police department where we do have on our phones that we can get ahold of them, but obviously, especially in more recent times with just some of the vacancies that they've had, they, you know, their response isn't, you know, the quickest that we're gonna end up getting. What staff has come up with is that they would like to be able to have something that could shorten that, that expansiveness.
Something similar to the police department's?
Um, yeah, but maybe not necessarily to that part to it. Yeah, I mean, we've had staff come up and say, you know, hey, you know, it doesn't have to go all the way up to the ceiling, doesn't need to be bulletproof. It needs to be something that would deter somebody from being able to quickly jump over, you know, the counter. They've come up with, you know, hey, could we put some sort of like decorative glass block or something in part of the way? The problem is, I don't know, no, is that, is the curvature, you know, on both of those counters? So can something like that be done? But I know Ron's been working at trying to get estimates for, for a while and he, he keeps bird dogging the, the individual to kind of get something so we can find. So those have been placeholders that are out there, but the city does have a security committee and that keeps continuously, continuously being brought up.
Yeah, I, I'm not opposed to it in any way, shape or form, I just didn't know what it was.
No, I just, no, I, and, and I wasn't looking at that, I was just trying to give you more of a, a full, complete explanation of.
And I think those numbers came from when, when that glass got put in, in the police department and I think it was kind of guesstimated what, that's what, that would be for that bulletproof glass. How I was getting it priced out with just regular glass, it didn't go all the way to the top, it was, you know, it didn't look so, you know, bulletproof. So he was gonna price it out two ways, but I, I'm, yeah, I, I might have to try to find a different contractor. I had to make multiple calls to get a contractor to come out and kind of look at it, but that's what that's for.
And safety is priority number one and you can't put a, can't put a value on a life.
Right.
But with that said, yes, I use but, are there other less expensive alternatives? Can you put a wall up separating the entire staff from the counter with limited access and, and decreasing the counter space available? Are there others, are there other options that the safety team has discussed that wouldn't be 300-plus thousand dollars?
Oh, I'm not too comfortable with these estimates that are in here, first of all. So, so clearly, if, you know, this has been just excellent dialogue tonight, that if, if we want to pull that out and that's something that comes forward later on to be funded based upon some really good options, I'm perfectly comfortable in, in doing that. These were just basically placeholders, I have no idea what it's gonna end up costing.
Does that come out of one, another one of those buckets or would that be levied for?
Well, eventually.
One of your buckets?
Let's put it, let's put it this way, it will reduce the request of increasing the levy that much more.
All right.
Is that, is that a good one?
Yes, thank you.
No, you are right, yes. So I, I'm comfortable in having those pulled back too, you know, at this point in time.
I guess my concern is how we, when we pull it back to tell them that we're not pulling it back because we don't believe in it, it's just we want to look and find out what, you know, what I mean, to keep that.
Yeah.
I don't want it to think that, oh, we're not, you know, we understand and we're, we're hearing what they're saying, we just need to look and see what kind of.
Right, and, and to kind of help with that, that's kind of where I came up with the language last year where we ended up approving it, but then requiring it to come back to city council that they actually be done and that stuff. And the reason for is because then you have a public document that did show support from city council. City council just wanted to see the final product component to it. So I think in that one, just because it has been out there for a number of years, again, another excellent point, I think we probably put that one, leave it in there as a placeholder, but then have that one resolution. The other ones will get changed based upon this conversation today, some of them will be totally pulled up. But that one, because it's a, it is a safety concern that staff is talking about.
It keeps coming up, I don't want it to be, yeah, we keep asking, why are we here? Why are we doing this? Because, you know, that type of thing, I just want to give them support on that.
Morgan didn't come to this meeting for, just to sit here, so how often are we reeval, are we annually reevaluating our streets and what needs to be done? I know that with our, our plan of our streets, we know that, you know, specific streets are getting done, but what if we have another, a street's getting worse than another one? Are we pri, reprioritizing them?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so yes, the answer to that question is we are on an ongoing basis reviewing boots on the ground, one-third of the city. So every three years, we have a snapshot picture of the entire city for all of the pavement condition within North St. Paul. So that's both our asphalt roads and our concrete pavement roads and alleys as well too are included. So the 2024 data is just coming in right now, so I don't have a report to you to supplement the report you've already seen that was completed last year and was also discussed during budget discussions this year with respect to what's the level of service that the council is comfortable with in terms of the overall network rating, right, on a zero to 100 scale? You know, as you, you may recall, that discussion was had. And just a point of clarification, I think there's a little bit of misrepresentation on slide four of your slide deck here. It says WSB's increase in, that, that was not a recommendation. I think the, the council was looking for what type of an investment from an infrastructure standpoint in roads would create an upward trend, right? So an overall network increase rather than what we were seeing was maybe just barely hanging on or a slight decrease in terms of what the analysis shows over several years with the current projects that were included in last year's CIP. What you have in this year's CIP, or this year's CIP moving forward is an increase in terms of investment in roadway conditions and that is expected to show that, you know, increase. But that is a council decision, not a WSB decision or a recommendation, just so we're clear. But yeah, so to answer your question again directly, that is happening. It's an ongoing reevaluation and so if we get new information or data with this next set of information that I should be getting in a couple of weeks here, you know, we can have that, we can share that with councils so we can see the most up-to-date information with respect to what is our current existing condition, citywide, all streets? Where are the priorities? And staff, public works, myself, we do on an annual basis try to make sure that we're, every year moving forward and it gets a little fuzzy out into the future, but making sure that we're trying to identify future projects that, for example, for a mill and overlay or pavement preservation effort every other year, that we're putting those dollars in the right place and not trying to invest them. For example, where we also have an underground water main issue, we don't want to put dollars on top of that and then have to dig that up in the future, right? So that kind of evaluation does happen year over year and, and usually after the budget discussions are had and the budget is approved, you know, we're starting not too long after that with Dan in the spring, looking at the next iteration, right? Using the most accurate information that we've got based on those annual evaluations.
Is that before winter or after winter?
Might be during, might be during winter in Minnesota.
Right, it's worth just saying.
Before the construction year starts, yeah, for sure.
After plowing or before?
Well, and we, and we also do get the guys that actually go out there in Philly, join these potholes. We get them guys involved with our pavement preservation, are involved with the meetings to get their views because they walk every foot of the roads too. So we do put a lot of effort into and a lot of agonizing and there's a lot of arguments internally which roads, you know, are, you know, people are the people want to see done. So we take the complaints that we get from residents, we consider that and like Morgan said, what's under the road and what the guys have seen actually walk in every, you know, inch of the road.
What's the most difficult to maintain, right?
Yeah.
From filling potholes, is there, can we reduce the, the amount of expenditure that public works has from a filling potholes standpoint by making sure that we time some of these pavement preservation projects properly? Any other questions for Morgan or?
We've had him sitting there a long time.
You know, that's why. I make it worth your while, dear Morgan.
I was just about to say that.
Thank you, council member, sure, thank you.
Is he pizza-worthy?
Yeah, yeah, gets your pizzas worth.
He was about to fall asleep, so.
But, no, I do, I do want to say what Morgan stated on that slide under, for, they weren't the ones making an increase. That's just the verbiage that I use because I actually was the one who requested, give us, how do we get that rating to come up with and they gave us estimates? But that's, I meant as far as it was an increase from the prior iteration of what we had seen. But I think it's the path that we need to move forward and I think city council was very supportive of that, so.
Our basic, it's part of our basic, what we need to do.
Thank you for taking accountability for that.
Yeah.
Now, now go after them.
That's right.
Any other questions, any other thoughts? I think this has been, seriously, this is one of the better dialogues that we've had on, on things and gave a lot of good insight for staff to look at. We've got our homework to do, but we'll, we'll do that and we'll get you more information. Next city council meeting in the workshop, we'll kind of be talking about some of the different revenue options, kind of give you a lot of information. And then I'm actually gonna attach a report for liquor stores that I think was done in 2021 by the state auditors, shows who has it, how they did on their operations and so forth, just to kind of give kind of a breadth of, of what's out there, what's been done, how, how are they operating? And, you know, and one thing you're going to see and if you were to look at any other city is that their enterprise funds, whether it's electric, whether it's water, whether it's wastewater, they all transfer to their general funds. You know, and so that's nothing that we haven't, you know, that we've been doing, we have been doing. So it's nothing new and we're not the only city in the world that does that because you'll see it continuously. And that's the reason for some of these other enterprise operations, whether it's a liquor store or potentially in a, in a cannabis, which there are.
What about our local smoke shops?
What about them?
Well, I mean, you said you were gonna tap into some of the research regarding the liquor stores. Can we do a little bit on the smoke shops as well? I mean, for revenue purposes, exercising?
As far as us operating a, a smoke shop?
No, no, not that, never mind, completely opposite. I'm, was not following the path that you were on. You were on the yellow brick road and I was on the red brick road over here. We'll discuss that another time.
Okay, we'll discuss that another time. So we'll be bringing some of those options and just for discussion and really staff is seeking direction. And then kind of we'll wrap up that, there's that one slide, what kind of options, where do we really want to target looking at for, for our levy? Do we want to, you know, make some of those? It's gonna be a tougher decision because we may not have all of that facility information. Then definitely, I, my recommendation was we wouldn't jump all the way up to the increase. I think we, we all are in agreement that there's a need, but I, I wouldn't go all the way to the extent that, that we're showing on to there. But anyways, that'll be coming up next week. I thank you very much for the dialogue, I mean, it was very, oh, no!
Sorry.
So close, so close.
All right, so back to the scorecard. Back, I'm on page 10 of 245, so.
so I don't know what it is in everybody's deck. It's basically, it's the 2025 budget update. And this goes back to the original question on, is it in or is it out? Does it cost us? Doesn't it cost us? Where is it? So I go back and I look, almost down to the bottom of the page, highlighted in blue, it says additional, add additional levy of $20,870 for parks and for buildings. Correct. So, that's, that's, the building portion is all the Wold pieces? Or is this, is parks only looking for 3,500 bucks, or are these the buildings within the park? We talked about a lot of numbers. So, it's one, what's being funded from, from parks? So there's building, there's maintenance building components for the parks, they're included in the buildings.
Okay.
And they're funded out of facilities. The other park components, because really, because really, the city's responsible for the maintenance of park facilities. And so that's why it comes out of a different funding source versus the park fund. So what's shown in the capital improvement plan, to be able to afford that all 10 years and what the total costs are, you would have to increase now the levy $3,500 for parks in each and every year for the next 10 years. For built, to afford what's in the facility improvements, you would have to raise the levy 117,000 this year, and 117 in addition each and every year for the next 10 years. So, to answer, to get back to where you, when you push something out, it doesn't eliminate that and doesn't reduce this need. If it's an item that we've determined really isn't necessary, would never do it, then that would lower the overall cost, and it will drop this number down something.
Perfect. Thank you. That was the explanation that I was looking for, because I looked at it as, you know, 1.65% a levy that we could not charge. So thank you.
That's why, that's why I answered. Yes, no? And that's why I wanted to circle back, because it's new learning. Thank you. Okay, now I'm done. Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for the information and all the hard work that everybody's been doing on this too. So I'm glad we had some good dialogue and were able to keep crunching and getting closer to the, where we need to be. Is there anything else? If not, I will ask for adjournment.
So moved?
So moved. Councilmember Schwer.
Second.
Second. Councilmember Norby, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will see you on November 19th, which is...